Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting, Kettering City Council. Today's date is March the 9th, and as always, we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin the meeting, we'll pause for a brief invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for all who serve the Kettering community. Give us enthusiasm for our work and wisdom to make the right decisions. May we remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so we may continue to serve our citizens with integrity and purpose, always remembering to be worthy of these responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. Our Miami Valley Communication TV operator in the back, Mike Soprone. Mike, thank you. Good to have you back. It's good to be back. So, next we'll move on to approval of the minutes, February 23rd, 2021, council meeting and workshop minutes. Mr. Lauder.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the minutes from both the council meeting and the workshop from February 23rd. I find them both in order and therefore move for their approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Being none, call or roll, please.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker.
I'm staying.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes. Moving on to presentations and proclamations, we'll begin with a fire department citizenship award. Chief Roberts will be making the presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am honored to hear your name.
Joe can now.
And in front of you is Citizen Doug McKinnon. Doug McKinnon works for the senior transportation department at our parks for our parks. He is receiving a citizenship award from the Kettering Fire Department. The criteria for the award is the citizenship award is awarded to people not associated with the Kettering Fire Department who distinguish themselves apart from others in actions that go above and beyond what would normally be expected or required from the average citizen at the scene of an emergency. As stated, Doug McKinnon is the driver for Kettering Senior Transportation. On Thursday, September 24th, Doug had an appointment to pick up a resident who had an appointment at her beauty salon. Doug arrived and knocked on the door, but there was no answer. Mr. McKinnon tried again, but it was all the same, no answer. Doug called his dispatcher to see if the resident had canceled her transportation appointment. His dispatcher advised him that her appointment was not canceled. This is where Doug went above and beyond what's normally expected. Doug went to the beauty salon to see if the rider paid the ride for someone else when she had never shown up at the beauty salon. Doug went back to the resident's house. At the house, Doug noticed that there were several newspapers on the porch and more mail than normal on the mailbox. Hearing the worst, Doug called 911 for a wellness check. Kettering Fire Department crews entered the house through an open window to find that the resident had fallen and was unable to get up for several days. She was having a serious medical emergency. Doug undoubtedly saved the Kettering citizen's life that day when he followed his instinct to not leave without knowing if she was okay. Thanks to Doug, she was able to receive the medical care so badly needed. The award reads, "For distinguished acts of unselfishness and citizenship by taking lifesaving actions to help a citizen of our community, your actions of ensuring the safety of fellow citizens through investigation and powerful wellness checks when their safety was in question embodies the citizenship this award was designed to recognize for lifesaving actions and heroics on September 24th, 2021." Thank you very much, and I would like to congratulate Doug.
Very good. Very good, sir. Very good. Come on, Doug.
That's right, boy.
Doug, thank you. That just embodies, excuse me, our Kettering leadership team and our Kettering employees throughout the entire ranks. So, Doug, thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we'll move on to presentation, the 2021 State of the City.
Hello. I'm Don Patterson, and it is my honor and pleasure to be your Kettering mayor. On behalf of the entire Kettering City Council, I share with you the state of the city. One of the most important responsibilities is to share with you the success of the previous year and the projects, initiatives, and service improvements we have in store for the Kettering community in the year to come. At the city of Kettering, our priority is to provide exceptional services while being wise stewards of our resources. We regularly communicate with you to demonstrate how your tax money is being used to improve Kettering, and I hope my annual State of the City provides another medium to accomplish that. Before we begin to revisit the events that made 2020 an unforgettable year, I am stopping right here to thank all of you. It's tough as tests for all of us, and we did the best we could with what we had, together. Last year was exhausting and crushing moments of loss, along with unforgettable opportunities to serve one another. I am honored to work alongside my fellow city council members, Tony Kleipass, who serves as vice mayor, Jackie Fisher, Bruce Duke, Joe Wanamaker, Bill Lauder, and former council member Rob Scott. Thank you for sharing your expertise and unwavering community advocacy. Mr. Scott was recently appointed to Kettering Clerk of Courts. It is also my pleasure to applaud Councilman Duke, who was recently appointed to the National League of Cities Board of Directors. It is a privilege to serve the best residents in the region. I look forward to working with you in my final year as your mayor and hope to continue making a positive difference in our community and beyond. Kettering's story began more than 60 years ago, and it continues to be a vibrant and flourishing community. We have celebrated great successes in recent years. Our employers are thriving. Our business parks are benefiting from reinvestment, and our commercial properties remain in great demand. Kettering saw some of the highest gains in residential property value in the region, proving that moving to Kettering was a wise investment. What better way to present this year's State of the City than by telling the story of Kettering in 2020? Like every great story, ours has heroes and adversaries. In Chapter 1 of our 2020 recap, we introduce our heroes, the great employees, residents, and businesses in Kettering. During 2020, I have felt and witnessed worry, defeat, anger, joy, fear, hope, inner strength, and heightened human connection. In a matter of months, our residents, city employees, business owners, and patrons worked together to reinvent the essence of the self-starter Mr. Kettering invented 110 years ago. And through it all, we learned that each day can be a good one or a bad one, depending on how we choose to look at it. It's all about perspective. It's all about resilience, and in a matter of months, all of you emerged as heroes. Let me take a moment to brag about some of our heroes. So many of our City of Kettering employees and even residents received distinguished awards throughout the year, recognizing their initiative, skill, and tireless service. As a community, we have so much for which to be proud, so let's get to it. We round out Chapter 1 at the Government Center, 3600 Troyer Road. This is where ideas become reality, ideas from our residents and business owners, as well as projects city employees create to maintain and exceed the exceptional amenities and services we offer. This is where people who care about you will find answers to your questions and help turn your problems into promising possibilities. Right next door, you'll find beautiful Lincoln Park Civic Commons, where you can relax and watch the world go by as a new flag waves from above. We joined together to complete the 2020 census, and I am happy to report that nearly 80% of Kettering residents completed the survey. Being counted will result in more funding opportunities for our community. In Chapter 2, we were all introduced to the coronavirus pandemic, our biggest adversary. In February, news of a novel coronavirus kept inching its way into state and local media outlets. The city of Kettering immediately began close watch on decisions made by the Ohio Department of Health and the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. The city administration quickly developed a COVID-19 task force to develop plans to mitigate rumors, promote safe work conditions, and keep employees physically and emotionally healthy. As the governor began to conduct daily press conferences, Kettering was on the verge of opening its activities for the spring and summer. On March 16th, at 5:00 p.m., recreation facilities closed to the public. As we moved towards summer, this new adversary became a force to be reckoned with. Kettering is home to summer fun. Fraser Pavilion offers summer concerts and festivals, and the Go Forth Celebration honors our freedom with fireworks and a festival at Delco Park. The Adventure Reef Water Park is a daily must for kids of all ages, along with our splash pad and summer camps. But, an adversary takes no greater pleasure than stealing joy and keeping all of us guessing. In turn, some of the toughest, most heartbreaking decisions needed to be made swiftly and carefully. As a pandemic heightened, the decision was made to cancel summer activities in Kettering. Without activities and with lower revenue, the city began to feel the pandemic's impact as layoffs and furloughs were now part of our history. Approximately 240 employees were impacted in this decision. Employees and residents alike were introduced to new, distant ways of doing business using conference calls, drive-through events, and mandatory facial coverings. The ebb and flow of pandemic requirements was fluid, and we all assimilated remarkably well. Impacts of the pandemic caused the tax filing deadline extension to July 15th. The City of Kettering Finance Department takes pride in its conservative approach and the resulting benefits. Because of the years of due diligence and meticulous financial management, the decreased income tax percentages still found the city's financial picture stable and original goals attainable. With the news of Wilmer Hale and Syncroney Financial leaving the city came significant loss of revenue and cause for further budget cuts in preparation for 2021. We rallied and determined that personnel costs would be decreased with a continued hiring freeze, with the exception of public safety, as well as through attrition, including retirement and resignations. Each department was tasked with decreasing 2021 budgets by 5% in order to accomplish the goal set forth in the city's strategic plan. The City of Kettering received $3.1 million for public safety personnel costs relative to services provided to the community throughout the pandemic. In most good stories, the adversary gains momentum, the real heroes emerge, and Kettering's story is no different. Chapter 3 of our 2020 story is one of several chapters where we talk more about our great heroes and the many ways in which they keep our city healthy despite the challenges in our own way. In this chapter, we focus on our community development heroes. We remain a leader in the community as the only jurisdiction in the county and one of few in the state that is 100% digital in plan review and permitting. We are proud to be honored with awards and recognition for our public service and cherish the regular positive feedback from our community. Our goal is to make progress easier for residents and business owners. We certainly place a great deal of focus on attracting new businesses and helping those already in Kettering grow and thrive here. In Kettering, the vast majority of our amenities and valued city services are funded by income tax. If we don't have the jobs, we don't have the resources to support the infrastructure, facility, and services our residents and business communities treasure. In the end, our goal is to protect the investment that you have made when you decided to call Kettering home. That means we invest in our commercial centers to support job growth, as well as in our neighborhoods and world-class amenities. Let me show you what I mean as we take a look at the Miami Valley Research Park. The Research Park continues to be a large economic driver for Kettering. The City of Kettering purchased more than 300 acres of unimproved land from the Miami Valley Research Foundation. As a landlocked community, the opportunity to acquire land for redevelopment is rare and exciting. The property is located in the northeast quadrant of Kettering. Miami Valley Research Park continues to see a surge of improvements to both existing facilities and available land. The city will continue to work with the KDC to aggressively market the land remaining for development and work with existing tenants to explore expansion opportunities. Community tissue services broke ground in 2018 for a 132,000-square-foot expansion at its Miami Valley Research Park facility. This expansion promises to more than double the current footprint, allowing for additional processing capabilities, marketing, distribution, and supply chain management. The expansion will create more than 200 jobs, primarily in the manufacturing and support fields at the company's Center for Tissue Innovation and Research. CTS is the nation's largest nonprofit provider of skin grafts for burn patients. Life Connection of Ohio will be purchasing nearly nine acres at the intersection of Research Park Boulevard and Woodman Drive in the Miami Valley Research Park. Life Connection of Ohio is a nonprofit organization that has promoted and facilitated organ donation for 30 years. Last year, LCO coordinated the recovery of organs from 93 donors, providing 310 lifesaving transplants. The proposed expansion will more than triple LCO's square footage, allowing for a larger workforce, expected to nearly double from 58 to 100 in five years. LCO's new location in Kettering is expected to be nearly 30,000 square feet. LCO hopes to take occupancy by the end of 2021. We completed the extension of College Drive in the Miami Valley Research Park near CTS. This critical infrastructure project will link existing businesses and make way for additional future development. During 2020, industrial commercial properties purchased four buildings and 28 acres of land at the Miami Valley Research Park. Situated near Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, the developer views the properties as suitable to facilitate defense contractors and research users. This is a vacant land once home to the Kettering Moraine Museum, purchased for redevelopment for nearly $250,000 in 2020. We look forward to facilitating business opportunities at that location as well. Now, let's take a look at the Kettering Business Park. Over the past several years, Kettering saw steady growth and expansion at the business park, formerly Gentilly Air Force Station, which employs nearly 2,000 people at Alternate Solutions Health Network, N12 Technologies, Prime Ed Physicians, and the Kettering Municipal Court. Alternate Solutions Health Network, founded in 1999 as a national leader in post-acute strategic partnerships, they collaborate with health systems to build a post-acute continuum of care focused on technology, efficiency, and performance. Alternate Solutions Health Network is dedicated to transforming the quality of care for both partners and patients. Alternate Solutions continues to thrive and expand in their 200,000-square-foot headquarters with expected growth in the employment of 340 jobs by 2021. Kettering Health Network opened their state-of-the-art Command Center in 2019. The facility continues to handle all scheduling and patient management for the entire health network. The City of Kettering sold 14 acres of land, now the home to an Amazon last-mile package distribution center. The site now holds 100,000-square-foot distribution center and associated delivery of vehicle parking areas. Nearly 400 part-time Amazon employees are working in the facility, with six companies providing drivers for the operation. Like most, this year has certainly brought the City of Kettering new challenges. We accepted those challenges and continue to seek ways to strengthen our community. The City of Kettering also partners with the businesses that choose to call this community home. In response to the pandemic, the City of Kettering Economic Development Team distributed PPE safety toolkits donated by Jobs Ohio to assist small businesses throughout our communities. These PPE safety toolkits will provide small businesses in Kettering resources to stay protected during the phase reopening of Ohio. We'll round out Chapter 3 by talking about the Business Assistance Program created by Planning and Development and Economic Development Department in response to the pandemic. The COVID-19 Business Assistance Program met the needs of businesses in the community. The city repurposed existing business loan funds, providing a responsive lifeline to local businesses. The city created a forgivable loan product that was accessible, quick, and easy to get into the hands of challenged business owners. With hard work and flexible thinking, the city assisted businesses and retained jobs. The project reflects outstanding performance in addressing significant and immediate needs in our community. In Chapter 4, we recognize our resilience in maintaining the city's infrastructure. The City of Kettering itself is almost 70 years old, and some of our neighborhoods nearing 100. Like anything that has been around this long, we have places that are starting to deteriorate. City Council made reinvestment in infrastructure a critical priority because we want to maintain a city that is well-kept, attractive, and vibrant. We want our city to grow older with grace and enhance its rich character by continuing to strengthen the foundation upon which it was built. We are putting just as much care into Kettering neighborhoods as we are on major thoroughfares with our prioritized residential reconstruction and repaving programs. We know that while our residents are investing in improvements beyond the curb, it is our responsibility to invest in the streets, drives, boulevards, and avenues that connect our neighborhoods. Whether we lead projects to repair or install new curbs and sidewalks or maintain roadways, the city is committed to putting every neighborhood on a rotating schedule for improvements that prevent deterioration. Kettering worked in partnership with Beaver Creek to analyze traffic patterns and ultimately plan for a significant improvements to County Line Road in 2021. The project will add a lane of traffic in each direction in order to ease daily vehicle flow and will also extend the multi-use path from the edge of the Miami Valley Research Park all the way to Dorothy Lane and Stroop Road. Ultimately, this will connect to the recently constructed multi-use path that leads to Indian Riffle Park, the Rob Deardick Skate Plaza, and the Kettering Recreation Complex. Let's take a closer look at Wilmington Pike, an area where the city has placed significant focus in recent years. Wilmington Pike is an essential corridor in Kettering, passing all of the way from our northern to our southern boundaries. It is also a stretch of town that fell into less-than-desirable state over the years. Seven years ago, I assembled a group of Kettering business leaders, residents, real estate experts, and city council representatives to create a strategic plan for this critical corridor. The task force established priorities and outlined phases for redevelopment that will result in a rejuvenated thoroughfare. Our investment in the Wilmington Pike Corridor continues to prove beneficial. Michael Chu's Restaurant purchased a former sports bar that went vacant in 2009 and plans to expand the dining space by adding a patio. The outdoor dining area will add 3,000 square feet to the 4,700-square-feet building. The renovations will take place in 2021. The restaurant will bring 10 jobs to Kettering. Along with significant indoor renovations, the owner plans to add a new street facade, as well as ambient outdoor features. The restaurant will receive up to $25,000 from the City of Kettering's Wilmington Pike Facade and Improvement Program that helps properties in the corridor conform to city code. We are dedicated to the Wilmington Pike improvement process, and we are excited to watch as it transforms into a vibrant corridor. In 2021, Far Hills Avenue will be resurfaced between David Road and the Oakwood Corporation line. We'll finish Chapter 4 by heading over to the northwest side of Kettering. Throughout Kettering, several bridges are reaching the end of their useful life and in most cases require complete replacement. The City of Kettering unveiled a new public art piece to the community, constructed as part of the Shant's Avenue Bridge Replacement Project. Shant's was designed to be a visible gateway for those entering and leaving Kettering along South Dixie Highway. The steel decorative pattern was inspired by the historic trolleys that ran along the Dixie Corridor, as well as the ornamentation of the historic cash registers manufactured nearby. Be sure to visit at night to see the full effect. The Ridgeway Road Bridge is also being replaced following significant public engagement efforts to collect feedback on project alternatives. City Council directed city administration to pursue grant funding for the purpose of reconstructing the bridge, and the Ohio Department of Transportation's municipal bridge program granted the award. This project will also include an art installation to reflect the surrounding landscape of Hills and Dales Metro Park. In Chapter 5, we will focus on the great heroes in Kettering's medical community who worked tirelessly to protect us from the looming adversary. Kettering Health Network, with their flagship Kettering Medical Center on Southern Boulevard, remains not only our largest employer, but also one of our most loyal community partners. They continually upgrade and expand their facilities and services. Look at this facility where Kettering Health Network broke ground in August of 2020 on a multimillion-dollar medical office building that will focus on senior care and house more than 30 jobs. The East Kettering Health Center will serve an increasing aging population in Montgomery County's most populated suburban city. Nearly 18.5% of Kettering's estimated 54,800 residents are 65 or older. Projected to open in the summer of 2021, the structure steel-framed building on a previously vacant 1.45-acre lot will represent a $5.6 million investment by Kettering Health Network. Eight physicians and advanced practice providers, one behavioral health specialist, and 20 to 25 support team members will offer primary care, internal medicine, behavioral health, and educational classes. The site will include x-ray and lab areas with more than 20 exam rooms in 14,316 square feet of space. Thank you to our healthcare heroes, who have touched most of our lives in some way during 2020. As we move into Chapter 6, we focus on all the great Kettering heroes who have contributed to the continued improvement of our neighborhoods. Being over 60 years old, Kettering has a varied selection of homes and neighborhoods of all ages from which to choose. Making our way down Dorothy Lane to Prue Woods Drive, we see an enclave of 37 newly constructed single-family homes in a park-like setting surrounded by maturing neighborhoods. The housing market in Kettering remains strong and was recognized as such by being ranked fourth in the state of Ohio. Properties in every style and price range continue to sell, often within days of listing. We are also excited about some of the reinvestment taking place in our neighborhoods as private real estate entrepreneurs purchase, renovate, and place updated homes in highly desirable locations back on the market. One by one, these like-new properties spark momentum for more improvements to those nearby. And soon, house by house, street by street, the property values of the entire neighborhood begin to rise. Our residents' efforts to maintain and improve their property are important and appreciated. As a way to be recognized and promote these improvement efforts, the city continues to sponsor the Neighborhood Pride Awards Program. The award recognizes residents and businesses that have made significant improvements to their home or business or have maintained their places impeccably year after year. Despite the hurdles the pandemic placed upon us, we work within the safety guidelines in place to proceed with this cherished initiative. Udora Brewing Company, Strathmore Crossing, and Valvoline Oil were three of the businesses that received awards along with 33 residential properties. Congratulations to all of the 2020 winners. Thank you for your efforts to make your property and our neighborhoods something special. I extend my gratitude to the Neighborhood Pride Committee for their efforts to review nominations and select the winners. There's an initiative to reinvest in our neighborhoods that is very unique and special to me. When I ran for office, one of my goals was to help revitalize Kettering neighborhoods and housing stock. and housing stock. Together, we combined our ongoing participation in National Make a Difference Day with cities of service to develop an ongoing neighborhood revitalization initiative. Since 2011, the city has done just that by adopting a neighborhood each year and leading efforts for reinvestment. A group of city staff takes a look at a number of elements, including the number of foreclosures, property maintenance violations, crime statistics, and more to determine improvements to be made. We focus on areas in which we think we can build some community spirit. The first neighborhood chosen for this program was Richmond Heights, followed by Indianola, Southern Hills North, Berwyn Park, Oak Park, Haverstick, and neighborhoods north of East David Road and Ireland Park. Without the care and ingenuity of the city's volunteers, this program would have had to take a timeout for 2020. Creative thinking and adapting to the new protocols allowed by the state, the program marched on, resulting in mask distribution, holiday card production for military personnel and nursing home residents, as well as trees being planted in Van Buren Park. Throughout the city, our community development team works one-on-one with residents who desire to make improvements to their homes or wish to buy a home in Kettering and need financial support to make that dream come true. Kettering's Rehabbing a Home Initiative has a number of low-interest loan programs to encourage and assist homeowners with financing for home repairs and remodeling efforts. A few examples of repairs and improvements include roof replacements, new windows and doors, and heating and electrical system replacements. Typically, the city serves 20 to 40 people a year, depending upon the amount of individual applications received. The city also carries out larger projects, tearing down vacant houses that are in bad shape and collaborating with owners of rundown properties to improve the space. In addition, Habitat for Humanity houses are built throughout the city, with one located on Dorothy Lane and several east of Woodman Drive. Overall, the city's goal is to make Kettering as accessible as possible and grow its housing reinvestments. Let's round out Chapter Six by taking the scenic route back to the government center to talk about property maintenance. Here in Kettering, we have expected standards that apply to each and every property regardless of location, size, or value. We have a dedicated team of inspectors who systematically review property concerns and work with residents to resolve issues. Here we are. Certainly, this is a place you all recognize and terribly miss. Fraze Pavilion is a crown jewel of Kettering and one of the things our residents love about calling Kettering home. The Fraze Pavilion awaits the sound of music, applause, and memories being made. Hang on, we'll get there. Chapter Seven is all about our great city employee heroes. In the absence of our annual Christmas gathering at Poland Farm due to the pandemic, our volunteer office developed our first annual Home for the Holiday Tour of Lights to rave reviews. Residents decked their houses and submitted photos. Our volunteer office put together a map to guide residents to these spectacular displays. In 2020, we learned more than ever the importance of online services. I encourage you to visit www.ketteringoh.org. You will see a place right on our homepage where you can get quick answers to frequent questions as well as report issues of concern that need the city's attention. This feature works on both our website and from our Facebook. The city is just a touch away, 24/7. Request police reports, report concerns, ask questions, and provide feedback for most city services. Certainly, exceptional city services make Kettering unique in the region. Among the most treasured city services is the protection offered by our Kettering Police and Fire Departments. Our four fire stations are staffed 24 hours a day with personnel trained and equipped to respond to your calls for service. In 2020, the Kettering Fire Department responded to nearly 9,000 calls for assistance. In February 2020, Kettering Fire Department welcomed Rescue Engine 34. In addition to pumping water, this E1 fire engine also carries technical rescue equipment stored in the front bumper for rapid deployment during serious vehicle crashes. KFD members have worked for more than two years to ensure this vehicle is equipped to provide the best possible service to our residents. The Kettering Fire Department will also welcome a new ladder truck to replace the oldest vehicle in their fleet. We welcome Mitch Robbins as our new fire chief as we bid farewell to longtime Chief Tom Butts. This change led to several promotions within our fire department. We also celebrated our very own Fire Marshal Bill Ford as he received the distinguished honor of the Fire Official of the Year. To better serve our citizens and first responders, a new computer-aided dispatch and records management system was implemented in the police and fire departments in 2020. The system tracks and categorizes calls for service, reports, and generates important statistical information. We continue a multi-year replacement project for the software that runs our emergency dispatch center. We completed a technology advancement which ensures the continuity of our emergency operations center and backup dispatch operations, a safeguard to protect all of us should a catastrophic natural disaster occur. These are only a few of the projects that will dramatically improve our ability to reach you in case of an emergency. The fiber optic service ring, completed in partnership with Miami Valley Communication Council and seven neighboring communities, is critical to our public safety operations as well as our efforts to attract new businesses. Data service is now a highly demanded form of infrastructure for companies and a critical resource for public safety. Partnering with our neighbors to install the fiber ring made the project more affordable and allowed us to connect our emergency operations centers to theirs, increasing the reliability of our system, particularly in the case of a disaster or citywide outage. We were proud to lead the way on this regional project and know that offering this modern infrastructure amenity will be highly valuable. We completed the design for a major renovation of the Kettering Police Department Headquarters within the Government Center complex. This significant project will bring the facility up to modern standards, improve and expand the functionality of the existing space, expand the operations of our Public Safety Dispatch Center, and create a new combined entrance for visitors to the Government Center North Building and Police Headquarters. In September, the Chief of Police and Administrative Offices moved into the new upper-level addition as renovation continue in the lower level at Police Headquarters. The health and safety of Kettering residents is paramount. Beginning in 2021, all Kettering police officers will wear body-worn cameras on their purses which will be utilized during any transaction with the public. KPD added a crisis intervention specialist to their team to spend time responding to mental health-related calls for service with an officer, conducting follow-ups on at-risk individuals, assisting in professional placement of those needing assistance, as well as helping train KPD personnel on mental health-related topics. Our school resource officers program grew from two officers to five, placing a dedicated Kettering Police Department partner throughout our schools. By establishing a presence in each school, the school resource officer can build trusting relationships with students by participating as active members of the school community and on the premises in the event a safety matter arises. Our public safety team is always ready to make the changes that will best protect the lives and health of our citizens. In our final chapter, we bring all the pieces of 2020's story together to show how the great heroes of Kettering masterfully manage daily service offerings, alternative programming, and our budget in response to our unexpected adversary, the pandemic. The pandemic stopped us in our tracks, just for a minute. Then it caused us to join together, six feet apart, to plan our next steps. Try as it might, it could not defeat us. Budget constraints are present, and our employees continue to make sacrifices to make do with what we have. Together, we blocked and pivoted to stop the endless punches of the pandemic threw at us. Our Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department developed alternative programs for summer activities and helped prepare one of the most memorable tree-lighting ceremonies we've ever had, albeit virtual. Through it all, the hearts of human beings prevail. And when I hear of the overwhelming generosity of our Kettering community, I am so proud to live here and be part of it. I'd like to end my presentation this year with a shining example. City staff includes a full-time compliance and inclusion manager to help us ensure that our facilities, projects, and programs meet ADA standards, and city staff are trained to lean towards yes in support of requests from the public. As fall sports programs for children opened up following the state safety guidelines, the importance of this position and its connection with all departments in the city was ever present for one child who was signed up for one of our fall sports. Having participated the year before, the sports supervisor remembered the player and instantly knew that masks required during the pandemic season would be an obstacle for that particular player. For the child, communication hinged upon reading lips. The inclusion and compliance manager had masks made for the two coaches and turned this potential hardship into a success. City of Kettering employees proved once again that they are in touch with the talents of one another, the community, and their customers. The City of Kettering Volunteer Program celebrated its 41st year of service. What began as a group of volunteers planting marigolds in the medium has blossomed into a force of more than 1,124 active volunteers to assist city staff by expanding city programs, enhancing city services, building an understanding of city government, and encouraging community pride. Although COVID kept our volunteer family apart for most of 2020, the connection and desire to help others remains strong. Volunteers made masks and made phone calls to ensure residents who were homebound had the food and supplies they needed. Since 1979, because of our volunteers, the City of Kettering has saved over $23 million in staff time. You are truly the essence of Kettering's community spirit, and we are grateful. I extend my heartfelt appreciation to all Kettering residents who take their commitment to serving our community to the next level. Their leadership is critical and their input vital. And to every resident, thank you. In Kettering, we highly value engaged residents, opportunities to have meaningful dialogue, and active participation in the leadership of our community. I and my fellow members of city council truly enjoy hearing from those we represent. We encourage you to join us for a city council meeting on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month at 7:30 PM, and stay connected to our city communications to ensure you are always in the know about the latest city projects, service announcements, and alerts. In 2021, I hope you will consider the ways you or someone you know might get involved in a leadership role in the Kettering community. Everyone has a talent, and together, we are unstoppable. Our Kettering Leadership Academy and our various city boards and commissions are frequently looking for new members. These are great opportunities to learn more about the city and create a path to additional leadership opportunities. What an incredible year of positive human spirit, rising above the negative effects of the pandemic. I am grateful each day for the opportunity to join together with all of you, to roll up our sleeves and help maintain the luster of this grand city. We have something special here, and the mission we share to keep it that way drives us to serve and contribute our ideas and talents. My service as city council member, and now as your mayor, has been repaid tenfold in the friendships I've developed, the overwhelming gratitude I feel for being part of strengthening what we have, and the most rewarding lessons I've been blessed to learn. May you and your families be healthy and prosperous in 2021. And on behalf of city council and staff, thank you for allowing us to serve you. God bless.
Thank you, and, excuse me, we couldn't have done that without all the information and everything that was provided by all of our various departments and directors, and in particular, Mayor. Stand up. And Carl at Miami Valley Communication for putting that together. Took a little longer this year, I was a little sick. Didn't have a voice for most of it, so we stopped a few times and all, but thank you, Mary, and thank you, Carl, for putting this together and doing a great job. Next, we'll move on. Huh? Anybody want to leave? I wasn't going to point it out, I was just going to let them. Next, we'll move on to public hearings, which we have none this evening, so we'll move to public comments on legislation. Anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have any comments that are not about legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone that's coming to speak about legislation on tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll move on to ordinances and second reading we have none this evening, so we'll begin with resolutions. Vice Mayor Clepass.
Thank your honor. I have a resolution authorizing the city manager on behalf of the Kettering Municipal Court Clerk to apply for a grant from the Ohio Supreme Court. The estimated cost is $345,229.85. The amount budgeted is zero. It's requested by the Clerk of Courts Robert L. Scott with agreement of Judges Dressel and Long. Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Swederman. Thank you, your honor. This resolution will allow us to apply for a technology grant from the Ohio Supreme Court to replace our current case management system at the Kettering Municipal Court and Clerk of Courts operations. The grant application will be for a little over $345,000. This is a one-time funding opportunity for the software and the training related to the new case management system, and no matching funds are required from the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Swederman? Being none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a donation for the purchase of a dual-purpose police canine. This is being requested by our police department. Estimated cost is $12,000. Amount budgeted is zero. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Swederman. Thank you, your honor. We're very pleased to please present this resolution this evening. It will be the acceptance of a $12,000 donation from the Kettering Police Foundation for a dual-purpose canine and associated equipment. This donation is made possible by the donation of Ms. Teresa Huber to the Police Foundation for this canine program. Ms. Huber has been very active in the area and has donated these types of funds to other jurisdictions as well. This donation and this resolution will be for the 2021 calendar year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Swederman? What's the dog's name going to be?
I don't know, they're picking out.
Oh. Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution designating a project manager to implement the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, and it is requested by the fire department, and I move for approval. Mitigation Grant Program, and it is requested by the fire department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Schreederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. At a recent council meeting, you approved the application for a grant program for the hazard mitigation grant. Boy, tough night tonight. Glad I wasn't doing the State of the City. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which is going to help us repair and replace our siren alert system. We failed to at that time to appoint Assistant Chief Mike Miller as the project manager as a requirement of that grant. This resolution will take care of that. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Schreederman? Being none, call a roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Cleopass.
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker.
Yes.
Mr. Lawter.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept for an Arts Next Grant from the Ohio Arts Council, requested by Parks, Recreation and Cultural Arts. Estimated cost is $20,000. Funds available, zero. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Schreederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This will allow us to apply for an Arts Next Grant from the Ohio Arts Council that will support the Kettering Art Initiative at the Rosewood Art Center for the grant period of July 1, 2021 through June 30 of 2022. The request is for $20,000 and would support a pilot program to transform public space. The inaugural project of a collaborative effort would be a mural at the Kettering Rosewood Art Center. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Schreederman? Being none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Cleopass.
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker. Mr. Wanamaker. Mr. Lawter.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a special projects grant from the Montgomery County Arts and Culture District. Estimated cost is $10,000. Funds available, zero. It's requested by Parks, Recreation and Cultural Arts Department. Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Schreederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This grant application is for the same project as the previous resolution, would be for an additional funding source of $10,000 from the Montgomery County Arts and Cultural District. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Schreederman? Being none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Cleopass.
Yes.
Mr. Lawter.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make, pardon me, supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Kettering, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021. This is being requested by our finance department. Estimated cost, $12,000. The amount budgeted is zero, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Schreederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This supplemental appropriation for 2021 is for $12,000 and would appropriate the donation from the Kettering Police Foundation. We have to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Schreederman? Being none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Lawter.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Cleopass.
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Moving on to ordinances and first reading, we have none this evening. Certifications and petitions. Ms. Kozinski.
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Thank you. City manager's report and community update. Mr. Schreederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a few items for you to see on the community update. The first is just a reminder that the city's tax deadline for this year is April 15. And as all the residents can receive information from our website or visit our tax office in the north building here at the 36th National Court Complex. And the deadline is April 15. You can also contact our tax division if you have questions over the phone, or if you stop by the office, we can prepare your returns while on the way. We recently opened the registrations for the AARP tax points that we hosted at Hennepin Recreation Complex. And after a short period of time, all of those slots have been filled. AARP is taking home calls to assist taxpayers and taxpayers. You can call 888-687-2277. The city is still accepting applications for the outstanding volunteer for the mayor's work volunteer service. The applications are due or accepted until March 12. If you have questions, you can contact our volunteer office at 296-2433. The city will be accepting registrations for our summer camps beginning Monday, March 29, for Kettering residents, and April 5, for non-residents. For more information regarding the camps and our current COVID guidelines for the camps, we encourage everyone to visit playkettering.org/camps. And finally, Your Honor, the last slide is just to invite the community and the region around us to apply for jobs for the summer in Parks, Recreation and Cultural Arts Department. We have begun our seasonal hiring process for all of our parks and recreation activities, including the phrase pavilion. Since, as you know, we have very limited activity last summer, we have a limited number of employees returning from last summer, and we're encouraging residents and non-residents alike to visit Play Kettering or visit the Kettering website on the resources page to apply for positions. And as always, you can contact our charter department by phone or Parks and Recreation as well. Your Honor, that's all I have for the Kettering community.
Any questions, Mr. Schreederman? Thank you. Next, we'll move on to audience participation point and program. If you'd like to come speak for council, please come on down to the podium. We do have a five minute limit. We need you to give us your name and address. Is there anyone that'd like to speak this evening? Okay, we'll move into audience, or excuse me, to council committee reports. Mr. Vice Mayor Cleopass.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do want to maybe speak for everybody and congratulate you and Mary and Carl at MBCC for putting together the State of the City address. It seems like every year it gets better and better, and being that this was your last one, I think you saved the best to last. Also, you know, as that video points out, 2020, there was many adversaries during the year, but as really pointed out, there was many, many more heroes during the year. So, thank you very much. And then last thing, as usual, we still have plenty of time to get out there and support our local Kettering businesses. Things are tough. Let's keep supporting them. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Wanamaker? Any report?
I have nothing there tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Lawter?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would only second the comments from Councilman Cleopass about the report and your job of presenting that information. I guess some of us would question the health picture, but other than that.
Ms. Fisher?
Well, sir, I can't help but comment on the way to our workshop this evening. I drove by Winsler Park, and I will tell you, there were 40 young men out there playing basketball. The parks were packed. And out here on Freys Plaza, if there was one walker, there was 50 walkers. And so it was great to see everybody outside, and so it's awesome that we got our basketball hoops back up because they're definitely being utilized. That's all I have today.
Thank you. Mr. Duke?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things, you know, it's pretty clear from your State of the City what an amazing community we live in, and we're all blessed to do that. We did have two ribbon cuttings this past week, believe it or not. We're still opening businesses in Kettering. Cook's Pantry at Town and Country, along with the TSB, a boutique of women's clothing, also in Town and Country. So Town and Country was booming. It was a lot of cars up there, and I encourage folks to shop locally, as Tony always says, and get out and do that. I want to make one comment, Your Honor. This past three days, Sunday, Monday, and today, and also tomorrow, I've been virtually attending the National League of Cities meeting, which had 49 states represented and over 1,700 delegates via a Zoom conference. Obviously, you don't get to meet everybody personally, but a lot of great rooms and breakout rooms and meetings and so forth. But I just want to take just a couple of messages that I kind of experienced during these last several days. The needs of America because of COVID are unbelievable. We're blessed in our community that we've gotten through this. I think Ohio's done pretty well, but I learned from colleagues, elected officials all over the country, that many other communities are hurting even a lot more than we are. And I know we feel we've had it rough during these past times. And the one message that I want to just share is I learned that the fear of vaccination throughout America is unbelievable. We've seen stories where half of our healthcare workers, in some cases, choose not to take the vaccine. We've been really lucky in getting many of our seniors in nursing homes vaccinated, but in particular, communities of color, where for reasons of fear or personal choice, vaccine distribution has been a real challenge. And the only message I want to share tonight, and was made clear throughout this whole conference, is if you're hesitant to take a vaccine, if you have questions or fears, please talk to your physician. That's probably the best place to get accurate medical information that will help you make those decisions that are best for you. It was pretty clear that the more we can do to vaccinate as many people as we can to get to herd immunity as fast as we can, we've got a chance to knock out these new variants and to open up our country as quickly as we can. And the final word, obviously, is, you know, where, we all hate them, but boy, wear these masks. Without these masks, we're just putting people in danger. So with that, Your Honor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. One, I'd like to start off by congratulating Officer Rustad, Officer Burian, and Dispatcher File on receiving the meritorious award. This award came from a 911 call on a medical emergency. The communication skills of Dispatcher File and quick actions of Officer Rustad and Officer Burian led to a successful recovery for the citizen in distress. Well done. Because of your extraordinary actions and the protection the Kettering Police Department provides, our community is in excellence hands, and we are grateful for you. And Chief, if memory serves me, is this the incident where the gentleman was cutting his grass?
Well, yes, sir. Officer Rustad did finish one of his arts.
Yes, that's why I wanted to make sure.
That's the only complaint the gentleman had, is he was trying to put his tree.
Yes. If you didn't hear that, they responded to a call of a gentleman cutting his grass, and they worked on him while he waited for the fire department to arrive. And after they took the citizen to the hospital, Officer Rustad finished. What happened to Burian? Where was he at? He finished cutting the gentleman's grass.
I wonder if he was injured.
Oh, is that what it is? I think it just goes to show you the dedicated type people we have at all levels of our city, and congratulations to all of them. Mr. Duke talked about the ribbon cutting we did at Piper Street Boutique and also Cook's Pantry. Both of them are located in Town and Country. The Piper Street Boutique offers a variety of handcrafted jewelry, bags, shirts. Jackie even bought a shirt the day we were there. So, congratulations to them. And Cook's Pantry offers top quality kitchenware and household type gadgets, many of which are made by local artists. So, just one note for our residents, Kettering Art Recovery Center opened just in time for this sunshine that we have. The facilities will be open Monday through Friday from 3 to 8 PM and Saturday from 9 AM to 3 PM. So, with that, our next regularly scheduled meeting is March 23. And with that, we are adjourned. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I could not remember the name.
Well, it was initial.
I know.
It was her honor.
I know, but I couldn't remember.
It was my partner.
I came up with a TSB instead of TSB.
Kitchen, kitchen stool.